For June 17, 2015, first action is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, a couple of quick announcements. Obviously, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live, so appreciate if you could mute your cellphones for minimum interruption. Our agenda this evening includes input into the naming of the North Andover High School track, and I just wanted to provide some insights into our policy for that, just so that we know what to expect and we can move forward. In a sense, we'll be following our special procedures for conducting hearings. That's our process, BEE. In this process, we will certainly give everybody equal opportunity to be heard in accordance with the policy. And in particular, the order in which we'd like to hear input would be for town citizens first, teachers and community, or school community members second, and then after that, anybody who'd like to provide input into this discussion would be greatly appreciated. And also, just to recognize that I know all of us have received an enormous amount of input into this. We're very excited to hear additional input today, and we'd just like to thank you for coming and for providing your insights into this important topic. So with that, I'd like to open the discussion for public input regarding naming of the North Andover High School track. And if you wouldn't mind, when you do come, please introduce yourself by name and your residence, or your address would be greatly appreciated.
Ben Witten, 696 Osgood Street. Today, I'm here to talk about the renaming of the track after Alex Freese. So far, you've heard from our coach, Steve Nugent, our captains, our principal, Dr. Scuzzarella, and many other members of the community who support naming the track. But you haven't heard from those who will train and compete on the track in the future. As I've mentioned, my name is Ben Witten. I am a junior on Coach Nugent's track team, as well as captain of the cross-country team, and the most recent recipient of the Alex Freese Award, which is given every year to a junior who best displays the quality that Alex displayed. Alex strived to be the best he could both on and off the track. He devoted himself to being the best athlete, the best student, the best citizen, and the best person he could be. He inspired those around him, and the way he lived serves as the backbone of the track team and continues to inspire people today, including myself. The other night, after receiving the Alex Freese Award, I reflected on my career as a runner. For those of you who don't know, it's been a rough road for me. I've suffered through injury after injury, seeming as though I was standing on the track cheering, standing around the track cheering for my teammates instead of running on it. And the other night, I contemplated whether I should give it up or not, to end competing in a sport that has brought me not only some of my greatest joys, but some of the worst pain that I've ever felt, both emotionally and physically. But then I looked down at the Alex Freese Award, and it was as if Alex was talking to me, inspiring me as he did his fellow athletes back when he was a member of the track team. It was like he said, "Don't give up. You only get so many opportunities to wear a North Andover uniform, and every opportunity is special and one that you may remember for the rest of your lifetime." I may not have known Alex, but without him, I would have made a mistake that I could have regretted for the rest of my life. This is why I believe we should name the track after Alex. He may not be a man whose name is on the record board or who brought many state titles to North Andover, but his influence was far greater. He influenced us with his character, his hard work, and many other great qualities like that. And that is why I believe we should name the track after Alex Freese, and you should vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are gonna come up. If you don't mind standing sideways so the camera can catch you too, so the folks at home, that'd be great.
I'd be more nervous.
Yeah, just know you're going out to millions of people.
It's on YouTube later.
Hello. My name is Matt DeBola. I live on 55 Fuller Road, and I'm a junior on both the North Andover cross-country team and indoor and outdoor track teams. As we all know, around seven years ago, Alex Freese, a former track captain, tragically passed away after he collapsed at a track meet. Although I personally did not know Alex, those who did know him described him as a person who not only embodied the qualities of a great captain, but a kind-hearted and respectful member of our community. Alex represents all the remarkable qualities in which a track program stands for. His dedication, hard work, and integrity are not only a constant presence, but also a driving force of both motivation and inspiration for our athletes. Our track program can be viewed as one big community, or in other words, one big family. And Alex's perseverance, respectfulness, and determination serve to empower all track athletes to constantly give our best efforts, not just on the track, but in our everyday lives as well. Having a track named in honor and memory of Alex will therefore represent all that we, as track athletes, stand for and strive to be. Thus, we ask that you please consider renaming the North Andover High School track on behalf of Alex P. Freese. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Rory O'Carroll, and I live on 29 Hawthorne Place. I'm here today as a newly-elected captain, along with Kyle and Matt and Danny and Ben as well. And I think the biggest thing that I thought of when I first came into this position was the size of the shoes that we had to fill, not just of the graduating seniors, but of all of these great captains that have come before us, including Alex Freese. I know that something that Coach Nugent stresses a lot with us is legacy. Not just, it has nothing to do with the points you score or the records you hold, but it has to do with character on and off the field, and it has to do with sportsmanship. And while I, just like the other captains, never had the pleasure and honor of meeting Alex Freese, we know from Coach Nugent and from others that he had an incredible legacy on and off the field. And I think that that's what we're here to ask you, is to help fulfill his legacy by renaming the track after him. And we just want the chance to help him continue his legacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kyle Sloss. I live on 97 Mifflin Drive. And I am a junior here at North Andover High School, and I will be a two-season captain for winter's, for next year's winter and spring track teams. In the beginning of every track season, Mr. Nugent sets two goals for us: one, to do our best, and two, to meet in the middle. For those of you who don't know, at the larger track meets consisting of up to 18 competing teams, the top two who score first and second overall meet in the middle to claim their awards. This goal casts an amazing influence over the entire North Andover team, and the necessity to achieve this goal is evident in each and every individual athlete performing in this program. When an athlete has a bad performance and Mr. Nugent asks, "Why are you so upset?", the response remains consistent, whether it be from a distance runner, a sprinter, a thrower, or jumper, the response is always, "I want our team to meet in the middle." Those same athletes tend to say that Mr. Nugent is their biggest inspiration, and I begin to wonder who his was. And in April of this past season, I found out that it is Alex. We had a huge meet just a few days following the seventh year after Alex's death, and Mr. Nugent began to give us a speech on the bus ride, just as he always does. This speech, however, was a little different than usual. He began by telling us about Alex. He told us about his character, his ability, his achievements, and his death. But most importantly, Mr. Nugent preached about Alex's impact on this program and delineated how every effort put into this program has been for Alex. We push to do our best for Alex. We encourage others to do their best for Alex. We run, we jump, or throw as high or as far as we ever have for Alex. We strive to be our absolute best for Alex. That day, Mr. Nugent told us, "If you ever need a reason to perform to the absolute best of your ability and to lay it all on the track, then think of Alex." Without the inspiration and influence Alex has cast upon this program, we would not be able to have the success we have attained over the past seven years with our winning of multiple state relay titles and our newly-won state championship. These titles would virtually be impossible without Alex's immensely encouraging influence. His energy is inside each and every one of us, but it would mean so much more if it were in front of us, around us, and underneath our feet. Voting to name the track here at North Andover High School after Alex Freese would not only pay respect to Alex's family, friends, schoolmates, and teammates, but it would also give future generations the opportunity to carry on Alex's legacy and to live with the inspiration that Alex has instilled in us. Our goal today is to name the track at North Andover High School after Alex Freese, so please, let us meet in the middle to achieve our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. A long trip.
Good evening. Bill Varney, 12 Winter Green Drive. I've been involved in the North Andover Youth Track Program since it began eight years ago. For the past two springs, we've had over 300 athletes participating in youth track and field in North Andover. Over this time, I've heard many residents regarding the naming of the high school track, as have you. One particular letter moved me with its clarity. It is short and concise, but I wanted to share it with you again tonight. All of you have previously read it. Dear North Andover School Committee, I am writing to you today to add my voice to the chorus of others who have already asked you to consider naming the North Andover High School track after Alex P. Freese. In a collection of short stories, he wrote in 2009, the writer David Eagleman says there are three deaths. The first is when your body ceases to function. The second is when the body is consigned to the grave. The third is that moment, sometime in the future, when your name is spoken for the last time. As special a young man as Alex Freese was, in his lodge of a tier in the fabric of North Andover as his death caused, it will in any case be a long time before his name ceases to be spoken. I myself still hear it frequently, but in naming the track after him, you can ensure that Alex's third death never occurs, and in a manner that would mean a great deal, both to his family and to all those in this great community who knew him and who continue to believe that such an extraordinary scholar, athlete, leader, and friend was taken for us so young. Respectfully yours, Kimberly Jones, North Andover resident. And Kimberly Jones's daughter was in the North Andover Youth Program for a couple of years. She's since gone on to Phillips and is having a great career. And I believe this letter that she wrote really is the essence of our community. It captures the spirit of what makes North Andover great. And so with this, I humbly ask all of you to consider voting yes for the naming of the high school track after Alex Freese.
Thank you.
Evening. Jack McManus, 391 Stevens Street. I'm proud to say I'm a fourth-generation resident of North Andover. Makes my daughters both track alums at North Andover, fifth generation. I do not take lightly the naming of public facilities. I've never stood up at a town meeting or a school committee meeting to make a request. This one is an exception. I think it's well-deserved. I was there. My whole family was there on that tragic day. And I observed kids struggling. I observed the coaches struggling. Coach Sawyer from Hamilton-Wenham has joined us tonight. I told him beforehand, I just felt for these people, because I don't think they had ever witnessed or experienced anything like it. Alex represented everything you'd want in a student-athlete, and I think it's a well-deserved honor if you can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Kim Reardon, 62 Parker Street, North Andover. I am a mother of two North Andover High School students, both of whom have run track. My son Sean is a senior. He just graduated, as was Alex when he passed. And my son has run track all four years of his high school career. While he did not have the honor of knowing Alex personally, I know that Sean completely agrees with Coach Steve Nugent's description of the family feel of the track team. Our son has benefited from the sense of camaraderie that Alex helped instill, and we are eternally grateful for this. We also know Alex's parents, Rich and Roseanne, having been involved with them through community theater. They have suffered what I believe has to be the worst tragedy any parent should have to endure. There have been many moments watching Sean run in meets that I think of Alex. What if I saw my son collapse on the track, people rushing to resuscitate him? What if I had to sit by his side in the hospital for a week praying, hoping against all odds that he would somehow pull through? And what if I lost him? I have cried with Roseanne as she described those last horrible days. I can't even imagine. Though I am sure the grief never goes away, I have to believe that at some point, you begin to wonder, "What if no one remembers him? How do I keep my son's memory alive?" As Mr. Nugent has told you, there have been events held in the years immediately following Alex's death to help honor his memory. But the reality is that Alex's teammates have moved on, many moved away, and those who actually knew and remember him have become fewer and more scattered. I also know that there was a certain amount of stress for Roseanne in the days leading up to some of the walks or events held for Alex. Naming the North Andover High School track for Alex would allow his memory to carry on in a more enduring but subdued manner. It would not be an event, rather a place. A place for athletes and citizens to push their limits, practice good sportsmanship, build bonds working toward a common goal, fortify, rejuvenate, or simply enjoy the great outdoors. On some days, the tracks will be brimming up with activity. On others, it will be peaceful, much like Alex. Mr. Nugent has, and many people here have already described all the wonderful qualities that Alex possessed. Dedicating the track to such an exemplary young man not only would preserve Alex's legacy for many years to come, but I am sure would offer tremendous solace to his family, especially his parents. I cannot think of two better reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reardon.
Hi, everybody. Mike Cokely, 191 Cotafell Road. Tonight, I speak to you as the president of the North Andover Athletic Association. Last month, we came and urged you to, you know, push forward for this public discussion. We had our meeting last week, and the members wanted me to extend a thank you for allowing this to go forward. So, thank you for that consideration. I just, we just wanted to formally state that we're fully in favor and support the naming of the track for Alex Freese and hope you'll consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cindy Jalbert, 175 Webster Woods Lane. Both of my children went to North Andover High School. My son Brian did run track. He was a junior. These kids age, wow, and I'm so impressed with the speeches they gave. They were just amazing. He was a junior. He ran with Alex, and we know the Freese family. And I'm here to ask you to please name the field after Alex, but I'd also like to ask you one other thing. I know this is a decision, and you haven't done it before, and it's something that you've got to give deep consideration to. But if there are questions you have, if you think that there's a group that didn't come and talk to you about it, if you think we've missed something, we'd like an opportunity to bring more people forward and reach out to a group of people if you don't think you've heard from them, if you think we've missed a group in town, let us know. Your next meeting, I think, is it likely to be in the fall, the second hearing? So if you think there's something, if you're not sure, if you want to hear from more people, if you want to hear from different people, can you let us know? And we'll reach out to them, and we'll ask them to reach out to you so that we can, you know, cover all the bases. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hello. Mary Lavery, 259 Campbell Road. I'm a recent graduate of North Andover High School, and I had the opportunity to be a captain on the girls' track team this past year. And now that I've finished my track season and career here at North Andover High School, I'd like to share the impact that Alex Freese has had upon me. Last year, I was the first girls' recipient of the Alex Freese Memorial Award. And since receiving that, I hung it up in my room, and it served as an inspiration to me every day. I decided to do cross-country in the fall to help with my track season. And during that season, I experienced a lot of problems with my asthma and my health. And over this past winter, I had some very severe health problems, and my season was cut short, and it ruined part of my spring season as well. And during this time of trouble and adversity, I always looked towards the Alex Freese Medal that I received for inspiration and hope to continue on with track and be able to keep going during these tough times. So I think that being able to name the track in honor of Alex Freese would be like a medal to the upcoming generations of the track, of all the track athletes. Because having that name right there, every time they step onto the track, they're gonna think of Alex and all the qualities he stood for and everything he represented. And they'll just drive the track team like it drove me to move on and move forward. So naming it would be a good legacy for Alex and help remember him in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely appreciate the thoughtful and the strength in the presentation. So are there any of those town residents that'd like to add something to the conversation?
Steve Sawyer, Hamilton-Wenham Regional Outdoor Track since 1969. When Coach Steve Nugent and the North Andover Knights were part of the Cape Town League, we had some unbelievable battles. When Steve and I talk about this, it becomes very emotional. I was there that day. It was very, very emotional to see what Alex did for his team and his teammates and for his community at large. As I know Alex, he was all about competing, running, and relationships. And this is what life is all about: relationships, taking care of each other. The students that spoke here tonight, they're taking care of their school and their programs. They're taking care of their parents. They're taking care of their classmates. People ask me, "What do I do in the real world?" I take care of kids, and I take care of parents. The family, my definition of family, involves everybody in the community. This entire community is one big family. You, part of that family tonight, you have a great, important decision that's gonna carry on for years. You have the responsibility and the opportunity to take care of kids and families. Alex, great sportsmanship, great competitor, but it was all about friends and people and relationships. He was a leader. He was a role model, and kids looked up to him. I think that's what we are all about, we in the athletic community. When kids compete at the high school level, not only are they competing for themselves, they're competing for the entire community. They're competing for the school committee, who runs the programs. They're competing for the families, the parents, and especially their coaches. It's all one big, large picture. For me, it's the right thing to do. It would be a no-brainer for me. Make the decision tonight, or make the decision when you have the opportunity. Take care of the kids and take care of the families. Because by taking care of Alex, you are sending a message to all the kids in the school, past, present, and future, that what he stood for is very, very important. So, congratulations.
Thank you. I'd open up the floor to other committee members, for the schools and outside residents. If there are no other residents, I'd like to add to the conversation. Anyone else care to contribute? So let me open the conversation to the...
I wanted to, I have two comments. One is I wanted to echo Ms. Jalbert's comments. Very well-spoken, gentlemen and ladies. Excellent thoughts for all of us to consider. The other thing I wanted to mention is, as part of this whole process, and you know, we've been contemplating this now for some time. This is not a relatively new thing. This has gone on for really maybe a couple of years almost by now. In the beginning, we didn't have this kind of outpouring of interest and support from the community. It was a few people contacting us from time to time and asking. And of course, through all of this, and we've mentioned this about Mr. Nugent, he's been the steady supporter of this idea. But in the recent times, as Mr. Gross had pointed out, we've all heard from maybe hundreds of people in one way or another about support for this idea. So this has been helpful for me, anyway, to see the kind of strong, and I think very positive and thoughtful support people have for this idea. So I appreciate you all coming and letting us know.
I would just echo what Mr. Lemper said. I mean, I thought the students did a great job. And I know sometimes it's nerve-wracking to get up and speak, especially on camera, but you guys did a great job, and you have a great program and great coaches. And so hopefully, as this process moves on, there'll be a great track that'll be redone. I think it's starting in July, or it's pretty soon. And we'll go through the naming process as we've kind of outlined, and hopefully, when you first kind of step on it back in the fall, we can look to be naming it for Alex. So thank you very much.
Just one comment. Ms. Lemper, I appreciate your interest in making sure that we've got the buy-in and the other members supported. I think our next meeting is gonna be in the fall, and at that point, I personally would like to hear recommendations for the how and the when, if there were a naming...
Event.
Event, so to speak. That would help give us, I think, some substance behind making this real. At least that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea.
If we could get that input at the next meeting, as well as others, that'd be greatly appreciated. Okay? So I'd like to close the public input session, if there's no other comments, and move on to our public comment. So the session, actually, if people are...
Agenda items.
In staying for the full agenda, please, I would encourage that. If not, if you want to take this moment, we'll take a quick pause to allow those to leave without embarrassment or not hanging around. I know this homework gets still made.
Yeah, you guys probably don't have anything else to do, so you're good here.
If you do want to stay, that's great, but we'll just pause for a brief moment if you want to exit.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, fantastic. Fantastic. Great, so the next item on our agenda is public input, excuse me, a public comment on agenda items. So if there's any public comment this evening on our agenda items, this'll be the time we'd like to hear it. No public comment? Great. So moving on, next topic is our student report. Is Matt and Courtney in?
Nope.
Nope, so we'll pass on that, unfortunately. Onto our consent agenda. We have approval for regular session minutes. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes. I'd like to take them by date order if possible. So is there a motion?
I move to approve the regular session minutes of May 6, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion? Any comments or corrections necessary? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let's say 4-0. Is there a motion for the next packet?
I move to pass, or I move...
Move to approve.
Thank you. I move to approve the May 19 regular session meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is there a discussion? So any, okay, so all in favor of approving the minutes as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
It's 4-0. Is there a motion for the 28th?
I move to approve the May 28, 2015, regular session minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I was not present at this meeting, so I'm gonna abstain from voting on approval. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving?
Aye.
All opposed? None, and I abstain. 3-0. And is there a motion for June 5?
I move to approve the regular session minutes for June 5, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous, 4-0, and that covers our release of minutes from the consent agenda. Onto the chair's report. Well, I guess that would be me.
You have to do the donation.
Oh, the donation, yes. Ah, I'm so sorry.
I'm so sorry. You know, it's kind of...
I have a different version of the agenda. Apologize. We have a donation this evening. Mr. Johns, would you care to tell us what is in your hand?
Sorry about that. This is the only thing. Okay.
My name is Dave Ja...
No, it doesn't. It only goes to the outside world. We don't hear it here. It's for TV. Yeah, yeah.
My name is Dave Johns. I'm from the North Andover Youth Lacrosse Association. I'm here tonight to present the stipend checks for the assistant coaches at the high school. I have a check for the assistant coach of the girls' high school team and a check for the boys' assistant. I'd like to present these to Mr. Mealy, I guess. In the memo line, they have it. For the girls, it's a $3,500 check. For the boys, it's a $2,500 check. In the memo line, it explains that we chose... In the memo line, it explains that we chose...
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Great. No, I was going to say, is there a motion to accept the donations?
You just have one request, that if you can get those through the system as fast as you can.
Shouldn't be a problem.
And all the other assistants.
Great. Thank you, thank you very much. Is there a motion to accept?
I moved to accept the two donations for the assistant lacrosse coaches for both the girls' high school team and the boys' high school team.
Second? Any discussion? Again, thank you very much. We would not be successful without support from your organization.
Thank you.
I just want to say super fast, I mean, the youth program that kind of is feeding into the high school at this level is just absolutely fantastic.
Seems to be good, huh?
And thank you very much. I actually heard of two families this week who were moving to North Andover because of the lacrosse program.
Wow.
One was from Haverhill who doesn't have a program, so their kids already play here. And another was moving from another town because they wanted their kids to play in North Andover.
Well, it's good, maybe we can move up and be with...
So I thought that was pretty great.
They started accepting kids from outside of town that live with families to be able to play here in their...
That's something special.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So all in favor of accepting the donation? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? 4-0. Thank you again, Mr. Johns. Right, so now we're on to the chair's report. So just two quick items. First, you may notice that there is a different chair at this meeting. One of the last exec, one of the last open session meeting minutes that we released was the reconstitution of the committee. So with the committee's approval, I'll be chairing this year. And Mr. McDevitt will be vice chair this year. So quick change in roles. But I did want to pass and express my gratitude for his leadership last year. And I certainly look forward to his support, as well as all the other members of the committee moving forward, because we can't do this by ourselves. It's a full-team effort, and I appreciate that. So thank you, Mr. McDevitt. Only other comment I have is related to, I guess the last day of school is Tuesday? And that is indeed a half-day, correct? And that's a real school day, as far as we know.
School day that counts, yes.
It's a school day that counts, though. As much as we would like to go and do something else, just remind us that that is indeed a half-school day. That's all I have for this meeting, other than, one last item. I think this is the last meeting we'll be seeing, Dr. Hutchinson, given that his retirement is imminent. So again, in addition to, in addition to thanking Mr. McDevitt for his leadership and support, I'd also like to pass on my gratitude for more than three years that we've worked together. It's been rewarding, and I certainly have learned a lot. So I wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you. Yeah, as long as you started that.
Go ahead.
We should sort of finish that up. You know, having now worked with you for quite a while, right? You probably weren't here that long. You were probably only here about six months by the time I got on the committee. You came in seven, and I started in eight, 2008. I think it's been a great opportunity to see things change. And you've really been a wonderful change agent for our school system, and we appreciate it. All the things that you've done and all the investments that you've made and all the ways you've helped us move ahead, standards-based education, and a lot of collaborative work that you've done, RACE, BRC, all of that. So we really, you leave us a strong legacy of great things that will help us for a long time to come, sort of like the comments that we heard about naming the track. Keep that legacy alive, so we really appreciate it. And we should all thank you for the contribution you've made to us.
Well, quit, Ms. Limpert.
Thank you.
So I guess we've aged Stan over the...
Yeah, 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 yeah. What have you had? We're not saying which one, though.
Okay. So, no, yeah, it's never less. So superintendent's report tonight, actually, we were just going to have an update on the literacy pilot program that went on this year. I think it's really contributed to informing how we're moving ahead for intervention in literacy next year. This is focused, tonight is focused on what we've seen, the results we've seen. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gilligan.
And I'd like to introduce one of our reading coaches, Jaclyn Taylor. Jaclyn, if you want to grab a seat over there, next to Mr. Limpert. And one pink, one white for everybody. So first and foremost, this is Jaclyn Taylor, one of our reading coaches. She's been working with Ann Joyce this year. And I think it's important to highlight that, some of the highlights that have taken place this year. The coaches have met monthly with reading folks from out the district. Karina Lynn from the middle school, Cara Frink from the high school, as well as the Title I teachers that support Thompson and Atkinson. And they've really done some wonderful things. They started with the assessment support, the DIBELS in the beginning of the year, really helping Blitz with those. The Tier One coaching and videos is, when you don't have interventionists and an abundance of interventionists, the biggest bang for your buck is the ability to teach teachers how to best impact classroom practice to get kids ahead who may be behind. They've created, the reading folks have created a wonderful literacy resource website for teachers. And so it's a repository of different things, resources, model curriculum units, model curriculum videos, site words, just a wonderful thing for our staff. They've also been running a PD course on using run-in records to inform instruction. It's been an in-service course. We surveyed the teachers before and after, and the results have been very, very positive. In fact, there's a veteran teacher out at the sergeant said, this is probably one of the best PD courses that I've had. So they've really done a nice job. We're running two sessions this summer. And I believe, I'm not sure as of today, we might even have a waitlist at this point. They've also, yeah.
What is that, running records? What is that?
It's a way we want to progress monitor to then go forward to intervene so that we know where kids are at, where they're going, and how they're doing, so we can adjust in practice.
You have to understand, we just came from a track discussion sometimes.
Yeah.
Running records. It's something to do with athletic, outdoor, you know, just whatever.
Is there something we can do to alleviate that?
Yeah, well, we're going to run another session in the early fall as well. And then along with the professional development route, so, you know, we also ran a reading intervention pilot program this year, and it was a collaboration with the reading coaches, Karina Lynn from the middle school, to develop the original program. They worked really hard to develop entrance and exit criteria. They worked with building principles to identify the highest need and best scheduling possibility. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jaclyn. She's going to give you a snapshot of what did they do? Where did they start? What were the results? And that's really, as Hutch said, Dr. Hutchinson, I should say, really leading us how we go forward next year, so we can continue to coach, but also continue to intervene.
So for the program design, we were aiming for 20 to 30 minutes daily within that week. And we wanted to make sure that the time we spent for intervention was outside of direct instruction time, so that the students weren't missing that time in the class. That was so crucial. And we really worked to try and group the students by skill, not just the classroom they were in. So again, we can more effectively target what it was that they were showing weaknesses in. And we had used what was currently available in the district for resources and brought it through that way. So in order to receive the intervention, students could not currently be receiving special ed services. They had to show that they were intensive in their DIBELS scores. And we then spoke with teachers to get input from their primary teachers. And then from there, we did a quick phonics screener, which is that pink sheet you see. And that basically just kind of gave us a breakdown of where we should be looking for what they were struggling with for decoding in their reading skills. Based on that, we were able to group them into intervention groups and then present that information to principals and teachers to get a more firm schedule to get going. When we were with the students for intervention, we made sure we were progress monitoring to keep up with what's happening. And we were using DIBELS every other Friday to do that. And we made sure that we entered all that information to a spreadsheet that was then shared with teachers and staff, so that we could, it was a team effort to work with these students. The exit criteria, so they were retested every six to eight weeks. And what we were looking for in order for them to leave the program was that on that quick phonics screener, they now had mastered the skill that they were struggling with earlier, and that was a score of nine out of 10 or 10 out of 10. And that on their DIBELS measures, they had at least three consecutive benchmark scores, so that we knew they were solid. To be a little bit more specific with the sergeant data, that was Karina Lynn and two Merrimack fellows. They worked with students in first and second grade, and they were able to service 32 students. Of those 32, 31% of them moved out of the intensive category for the oral reading fluency measures, and they moved into strategic or core. Three of those students were picked up for IEP services during this time, and four of them met those exit criteria we were just talking about, and they were dismissed from the program. Taking a look at some of their data, that quick phonics screener, the last section on that first page is vowel consonant E concepts, so like the long vowels, name and rope. And what you're looking at here is really that growth or the jump that they made. So when you see the orange there, it means that they were initially intensive in those scores, but by the time we took the second measure, they had moved up to strategic. The green shades here, both of those green shades mean that they had mastered that skill. The darker green is showing the students who made the largest leaps, because they initially were intensive on the skill. And by the time those measures were taken again, they were masters within that skill level. And these are second-grade numbers, so when you look at R-controlled, that's a more difficult skill than the vowel consonant E is. The blue you're seeing there, consistency doesn't mean absence of growth. It just means that they stayed within a band. So for instance, if they had zero on the R-controlled measure in the beginning, they might now be at five, but that wasn't enough to push them into the strategic category. So there was growth there, but we didn't necessarily have the next jump up. But again, same for the other colors. First-grade data with the digraphs, colors mean the same here. And again, that dark green is the largest jump, the largest growth jump for students. Kittriss was serviced by myself. I had 18 students in both first and second grade. Of those 18, 33% moved out of the intensive oral reading fluency category into strategic or core, and one of the students were picked up for the IEP services. Here, we're looking at whole words read, and we've changed it a little bit. We're now looking at the types of gains they're making. And so these numbers here are, they're industry standard. They're the numbers that would be used for a lot of the curriculum-based measurements, not just DIBELS, but AMES Web. And what we're looking for in intervention are the ambitious gains, which is that dark green, because that's really almost an accelerated growth for those students, which helps them close that gap. So before the ability for us to pull them in for intervention, they were absolutely making gains. But we really wanted to be seeing the ambitious growth. And after the intervention, we were seeing more of the ambitious growth for those gains for those students. This data is for oral reading fluency instead of just whole words read. You'll see a little bit of variation in the numbers there, because we were grouping both first and second grade for this data. And there are different levels of gains for those students. So for instance, in oral reading fluency in first grade, you want to see three words or more per week for ambitious, but in second grade, it drops to two. Over at Franklin, Ann Joyce took on 16 kindergarten students. And of those 16, 81% of them were moving out of the phoneme seg fluency category into strategic or core. And just to kind of define that one, it's if you gave a student a word, they could hear the word and then break it into the individual sounds. So it's almost pre-the phonics session there. So 81% of those students got out of that intensive category, and then 38% of them moved out of intensive for the correct letter sounds. Same idea with the gains here, before intervention and after intervention for phoneme seg. We're looking at 81% of those students were making ambitious gains during this time. And these were the correct letter sounds. Same thing with the gains. So in looking forward, after having a chance to do this, which I was very excited to do, and I'm excited to be here to share all this, we are now looking at that DIBELS data we did in the June, the spring benchmark. And we've come together as a team, and now we're looking at that data and doing percentage of need within schools, so that we can then divvy up, us as a team, to where the need truly is and working with scheduling that way. And we have a preliminary schedule and a plan that we're going to work on to be able to present come September, so that we're not wasting any time. We're hitting the ground running in September to then pull those kids and do the quick phonics screener, have our spreadsheet again. And now as a team, we're meeting, and there are kids at the district level. And how can we do this? Where are our groupings? And then presenting that to principals and teachers, just like we did, and saying, okay, let's do it.
This is focused on K through 2, is that what it is?
It is.
And so now we, next time you come, you'll have to teach us the language, strategic...
Yes. Give you some numbers for those.
Well, no, just the terms. Is that good? Is that better?
Back to the fall of review of the data.
Right, right, right. Interesting.
Can I ask a quick question? So for example, when you look at Franklin, there were 16 students that were serviced there. So I'm just curious, how were they identified? Were they the lowest scoring, or kids who scored kind of under a certain level, or...
So we took, when we first started, we took the mid-year benchmarks, the winter benchmarks for DIBELS. And what we were looking at is the intensive band, which is the lowest band. And then of those scores, we took the section of kids who scored there, we gave them all the quick phonics screener. And then based on what the screener said and their scores, we took the lowest of the low from that. So really, we were targeting the kids with the greatest weaknesses in these types of skills. We knew the amount of time we had for that one person who was there, Ann was there. And so we took the numbers. We knew she could service 16, so we looked at the kids with the greatest need, those 16 students.
And are they pulled out of the classroom, or are they, is that part of the regular day?
So it is part of the regular day, but it would not be during the direct instruction time. So for instance, with that kindergarten group, it might be during their literacy block that the teacher had taught the main concept for that day, and as they went into their centers, that would be a time Ann could pull a group of four.
Okay. So this is exciting. It looks like we've helped a lot of students really master some skills that they didn't have. Can you compare this to a group of students that weren't exposed to this intervention to see if their normal progression through the year is accelerated by this, or not?
And that is something we did look at. And the rate of growth, so that we kind of tried to show that in the pie chart there. The ambitious gains are what we were looking for, and they were making gains previous to this. But they weren't necessarily as many students within that ambitious gain category.
So we have another group of students that we can look at that weren't exposed to this intervention and see that there's improvements beyond what they would normally have encountered. That's very telling data. That's very telling data. Do you have a feel for how you might want to scale this? Or I assume this is something we'd want to sustain.
Yeah, so moving forward, we're looking at operating within our means to be able to continue to provide the coaching model. But as they've made the inroads with the coaching, the coaches themselves would devote time to schools. And we're also looking at, you know, some of the money that we use for the Merrimack fellows, will now provide that support at the other schools, so that we can have the appropriate, or a particular amount to service the highest-needs kids on scale at all the schools.
Based on the data that they put together at the end of the year, we presented to the elementary principals today, actually, all the principals that were there, and looking to say, based on the data, this is the way the groupings would be for the first eight weeks of next year.
First eight weeks.
And then they relook at the data, the new data they're having on students in the fall, and they would regroup. And then you'd be producing the same sort of data, as you see tonight, on those stages throughout the entire year. Again, it's focusing on the first eight weeks of school, the current first and second graders next year. So this year's K and first. So, um, and only in the, um, Title I schools will there be more support available for grades three to five. Uh, I think, uh, the beauty of it is although we're expanding another reading teacher next year, um, we'll be able to really look at some really hard data, say, look at the results and be able to say, okay, now move forth, expanding the model, you'd be able to expand the model, uh, with the data measurement that we want to see. Rather than just say, let's just try to do this across all five grades and really have it watered down. So, uh, I, I think we're going, you're going to see some line item in the budget expanded next year.
Yeah. How do you, how do students go into the IEP track? From where you, where you're doing?
So from us, it's gotta be, or it has to be, sorry, I shouldn't say gotta. It has to be.
That's okay.
Um, a response to intervention type model. That's usually the approach that should be taken. Um, so if we see problems that might be arising within the general ed classroom and the score support, and there's discussion with interventionists, the interventionist can spend some time with those students as well. Make some suggestions for the general ed teacher. We try and conjunction, we meet together again and we discuss again. And if it truly is showing that there might be something else there, there, the same numbers we're seeing just aren't shown with that student. Um, then we have the, the data, the backup and the, then coursework from the student to, to bring forward.
And then there'd be further testing to see if they're identifying their vulnerability.
And there's a team, actually, the student assistance team.
But the solid data leading up to it, which is.
Right, right.
What you really need.
So obviously I'm thrilled because reading has been something that's important to me. And I'm happy to see the intervention at the elementary level. And it's great to see children making gains and certainly it will impact their entire experience, which I think is fabulous. Um, I guess what I'm wondering about is you had mentioned that there's the band, the lowest scoring band, and then, then the subgroup within the band. And so I guess what I'm wondering for next year is thinking about, you know, how, how can we touch all the students in that band? Because clearly there's, it sounds like there's still more need than what we're able to provide. Um, and so I think for us, we need to think about what can we do, um, within our means, but, you know, creatively and, I don't know. I mean, I think we need to rethink this because clearly getting students reading on grade level. Um, and that's another piece of the data that I'm hoping that we'll get at some point is, you know, what, by the end of the year, where our students are in terms of meeting grade levels. I think we've only been about fifty percent, um, each year. So where we are this year now with intervention and going forward, being able to compare that and how we can, um, make sure we're touching all the students who need the intervention.
Yeah, I would agree.
So thank you.
Having, having data to make tactical decisions on how to apply critical resources and how to make the most benefit is, is critical. But I also agree that we need to have our eyes set on what are those key performance indicators that we want to see? You know, is the demand growing? Is it, is it shrinking? Are we moving the needle for the, for the whole population? So I echo your concerns and I think it'll be, it'll be good to be able to have an update, um, you know, next year on, on progress that we're making with our limited resources.
Yeah, and I think that we, we just can't forget about the wonderful coaching work that's happened. Because that's where you impact everyone is when you have best practices and what's that RTI model is that tier one intervention where the teacher's intervening on behalf of the kids who, who are behind. But in addition, the ability to intervene with the kids with the greatest need is certainly, um, beneficial.
So, uh, let me just follow from Ms. Warren's comment. So I would challenge you and Mr. Mealy. This is, could be the basis for a nice performance-based budgeting activity, right? Because if we have the data, we can show the benefit.
It already is. It's already built in the next year.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm sure you'll be seeing, uh, a request for more resources around this. Uh, in the, would it be the sixty, would it be the seventeen budget now?
Good connection.
Seventeen budget.
Fourth smartest guy and the fifth smartest, eighth smartest guy. You're okay. Good. No, no, that's good. That's good.
Thank you very much. Very good presentation.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Oh, and, um, I'd be remiss to say that, um, Jaclyn's sidekick, Anne Joyce, um, she, she had her son's fifth grade night tonight in Reading. Um, and she's worked equally as hard on this, along with Mary Julie Gregwak, um, has been instrumental, um, in bringing these groups together, so.
Absolutely.
This is excellent. So, um, I just want to say again, thank you. And, um, I, I have a first grade daughter. And so she, she wasn't in this that I know of. Um, but I noticed her this year coming home with so many more different concepts about reading than my older boys did. Um, and how they kind of did different things. So I don't know if it's directly, you know, from you or the reading coaches, but, um, she was more excited and she was more excited to have different ways of tapping letters out and.
It's great.
Just, you know, she would just get excited when she would recognize the patterns that were there. Um, and so even if she wasn't included in part of the program, the teachers, I think, were incorporating some of those pieces into it. And it was certainly kind of, um, casting a wider net of the students, um, that are there. So thank you for that. And, and she's reading better now than she did before, so I'm very grateful.
Awesome.
We'll look forward to your presentation in the fall.
Yeah, I'll be back. I know we had the fellows this year. I think we had four, is that right, or five? How many fellows we had? So what's happening? You had mentioned some, one more reading.
We are not having the fellows next year. We're having a reading teacher and a, uh, reading tutor next year.
Yep.
Rather than the fellows.
But the coaching program is still intact, correct?
Yeah. It's just rather than full-time coaching, they'll be intervening. As well.
So.
Two part coaches, part interventionists, and then one full interventionist.
Right. And then in addition.
One tutor, interventionist, twenty-four hour, twenty-five hours a week, right?
Twenty-five hours a week.
Yep.
And this is in addition to Title I reading support that we have.
A hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, do we have the capacity to do the, you know, the coaching, which is now, I guess we're turning people away from that program?
Well, no, it just, it, we're not turning, I, I just meant to say, it's been so popular that the summer course filled up very fast. We're going to be running two summers and then we'll continue throughout the course of the year.
I see. So we believe we can meet the coaching and as well as take on the.
And the coaching, uh, I mean, this is something they came up with in addition to what they already do with during the day, getting in the classrooms. This is all after school and it's, and the, uh, the response has been pretty amazing. And, and again, doing, going that route, you really, you, you get the foot into the door into the classrooms, you gain the trust of the teachers, and you'll just see more and more, uh, results in tier one, which is classroom practice, moving forward.
Great. Their inroads this year were very skillful and, uh, and that's a sensitive thing when you're, we're having new positions and you're working with teachers. And, um, we had the right folks with the right talents and, um, we're lucky to have them.
Yep. You're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I've asked Jim to give an update on, um, the FinCom meeting that occurred recently.
I'm sorry. Yeah, um, but we have other presentation that.
No, just Jim, just give him the update.
Sergeant Playground.
Oh, right, maybe we can take that out of order.
Sure.
Just so we can get people on their day.
Taking out of order the playground.
Yes. Yeah. Is that, um?
Full business.
Yeah, so we're just going to jump to old business real quick and then we'll come back if that's okay.
Yeah. Great. Thank you for having me back again. Um, since our main meeting, just wanted to provide you an update on some of the, um, discussions that we had on the next steps on the phase three of the playground renovation. Um, and hopefully we've checked all the boxes and, uh, have crossed off all the to-do. So we're really looking to answer any final questions or concerns you might have, um, otherwise get approval to move forward with phase three of the project. So what you'll see on the first page is the rendering that we left you with the last time. And if you remember, the big takeaway after that meeting was to work with CONCOM to determine the implications of the no-build zone. Um, after a site visit and several conversations, it was determined that we didn't need to go through the notice of intent process. And as we learned more, that's actually a fairly, uh, intensive process. There's a lot of paperwork. You have to hire a certified engineer to conduct the site survey. And then and only then will the, the commission review the application and make a determination of whether or not the project is acceptable. If they find the project acceptable, there could be remediation actions that you have to take. And so as we thought this through, the, the dollar signs just kind of kept adding up. Right between getting the, the engineer for the survey and then potential remediation actions. Um, combined with the delay that this would have put against the project, um, the committee made a determination, um, not to proceed with the notice of intent and instead revisit the design. So what you'll see on page two, what was formerly an asphalt extension to accommodate a full basketball court, we have brought that back outside of the hundred-foot build zone into a half-size basketball court, um, which is still a much better option than what the kids have today. It still does extend the asphalt to allow more, um, hot-top space for the kids to play in the winter. And very importantly, it still enables us to achieve, um, an accessible pathway to the swings for the, the students with limited mobility. So, uh, we didn't get everything we wanted, but, uh, that just wasn't possible with the budget. And, you know, Dr. Foster and the, the committee is, uh, very happy with this design. And it's within budget and we'll finalize it with CONCOM. But we've pretty much gotten an appro, a verbal approval from them at this point, so.
Probably get it built in your lifetime too, right?
Hopefully July. So which brings to next steps, right? Um, we have ARCO, we've been working with Ray Santilli. We have ARCO, it's all quoted. And, uh, ARCO is really just waiting for our word to basically schedule the work. They're hoping to get it done within a week in July. And then following that, we would have the play structure providers come in and, and implement those standalone structures. So would, this would all happen before school starts.
That's fantastic.
Great. And you, you, the last time you were here, you, you talked about putting some containment wood around.
Yes, that is still completely intact and part of the scope. Yep. Now, the only thing that changed since our last meeting was really pulling that full-size basketball court into a half-court.
The, the surface to allow wheelchair access to the swings, what is that? Is that just the grass or the asphalt?
It'll be asphalt up to the mulched area. And then we actually have, um, rubber, big, heavy-duty rubber mats to, to provide a more accessible path to the swing directly.
Awesome. Okay, can I ask a quick question just about the revised layout? So where there were swings before, are those gone? It looks like there's kind of something there, but I don't know if that.
It's, it's Google Earth updated their snapshot of the playground. So this is actually much more recent than we had. The snapshot that Google Earth had before didn't even have the swings, so we kind of had to draw those in.
Okay.
But what you see here is the actual mulched area. And you can kind of see the shadow of the swings there. So that's the, the current existing swing area.
So those will stay?
Those will stay. And we're basically going to hot-top out to those swings.
Right.
Where that half-court is.
Okay. That's great. Great. Thank you very much.
I apologize, I missed your, your first presentation. Had you considered turning the full court so it fits inside of the no-build?
Um.
Just to provide that?
So the.
Too late. Yeah. They're done.
We did consider running the, the full court, I guess we'll say, kind of parallel with the swings.
Right.
The problem that presents is you then have one of the basketball hoops in the middle of the hot-top. And it's on the direct path for the dumpster truck, which we've already lost a funnel bowl due to some, funnel ball pole.
Oh, my God.
Due to some bad driving. So we wanted to steer clear of that access path to the dumpsters, so.
Sound logic.
We feel like we've racked our, we've stood out there for hours at this point. Kathleen Bass has joined me here tonight and we've just tried to envision all the possible options. And we think this is probably as good as it gets. It's safe. It's, still kind of checks all the boxes in terms of the objectives.
I think half-court is, is great, and I think it's a great, it, it, obviously a curve at the end. But I think you guys did a great compromise kind of solution for it. So this is fantastic.
If it comes to him, I would compromise every.
I think it's a give and take.
And you're keeping foursquare and funnel ball. So, I mean, those are just.
Yeah.
King of the playground right there.
And we will be able to add some foursquare. We will probably in a future, you know, fifth grade class gift or whatnot, put a funnel ball pole back up there. So, uh, there's still plenty of room for all of that to happen.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your hard work to you and Kathleen.
And Dave Fanuelli was going to make it, but he's at another committee meeting. And so, yeah, lots of hard work behind the scenes. Hopefully we're there.
Thank you. Great. So I'm going to take a motion to, um, approve phase three of Sergeant Playground project.
Uh, so moved?
I will second.
Any further discussion?
I think I'll abstain because I was on the committee for a while.
Oh, okay. All right. I was, I didn't know if you wanted, because you would, okay, that's fine.
That's fairly reasonable. With no further discussion, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And one abstention. Thank you, Ms. Warren.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward. Great.
Silly question.
Sir?
What did we approve? They have all the money, right?
They have to have our approval to make the modification to the grounds.
Okay. Thank you. But they have the money, right?
Oh, yeah, we don't have to approve any of them.
We didn't, no money.
You're ready to check it, Stan.
No money, no money.
It's a personal check.
Okay. That's the second check I've been writing.
So, great. And thanks, thanks for entertaining the, uh, the courtesy of allowing them to finish the day a little bit earlier. So back to our.
Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Mealy.
As you recall, as we got towards the end of, um, or towards town meeting, and we were talking about the budget deficit due to the extraordinary, um, increases in our district tuition placements. We still weren't sure about the process. And, you know, we've been, as we've been providing you guys with the updates monthly, we've also been meeting with the town manager. And in order to work out how that was going to be covered, um, it turns out, I actually was not much time left before town meeting, thinking it might be a warrant article that had to be voted at town meeting. But it turns out it wasn't. It just needed to be approved by, um, a vote of the Board of Selectmen and a vote of the Finance Committee. So, um, not understanding the process completely, I didn't, um, really keep the Finance Committee up to date on the situation. I did mention it during our budget presentation as a justification for the stabilization fund. Uh, but I didn't specifically give them the report that I had been giving you. And so that concerned them and they asked me to go and explain the situation to them and, um, figure out how we might proceed in the future. So what we're going to do is after I provide the school committee, and this will start in September with a budget status report, I'll attend the FinCom meeting and give them the same report. And this plays well into the, um, the creation of the stabilization fund. Because part of the protocol for that is that Fin, Finance Committee has to understand if we do have to tap into it, why. So providing them with those monthly status reports, they'll be up to date, um, right after you guys are, to whatever the situation might be. So that was the, the takeaway, was to answer any questions they had about how we got there. Um, I assured them that it certainly wasn't, um, like, trying to keep it from anybody because we were talking about it in our public meetings on a regular basis and meeting with the town manager. So, uh, the, everyone agreed that the best way to go would be to just provide them with the budget status reports that you guys get, um, on a monthly basis.
Great.
Two, two comments. First, um, in defense of Mr. Mealy and his, um, maybe not supplying information when they, when people thought it was most timely. Um, this was a, an occurrence that I've never seen personally in, in some number of town meetings. Um, normally at the, during town meeting, the, the town, the town manager transfers money between budget accounts just because it's not being used someplace and could be used someplace else. That's a, that's a regular activity at every town meeting I've been to. Normally it's small amounts of money. This was, uh, one million, two hundred and thirty thousand. I've never seen that kind of, that level of transfer ever. So it was.
Well, that's a combination of out-of-district tuition and snow nights.
Snow nights, extraordinary.
But I, I can understand the, um, the Finance Committee being asked to sign, uh, to sign a joint agreement with the Board of Selectmen the night of town meeting when it's a million-two.
Yeah.
Imagine them being a little concerned about that and like, what? So that was something that I've never seen before, and I think in Mr. Mealy's defense, I think we would have known more about the process and what was going to happen. We would have said, gee, we better let them know about that. So that was one thing. The second thing is I, I, I think that, um, one of us may want to go to Finance Committee meeting with Mr. Mealy. And I think they could use a little bit more education about special education, how it works, how we fund it, what our responsibilities are. Um, there was this kind of an implication that this is like bad budgeting. It's like, you know, why didn't you guys budget better and why'd you have this big overrun? And we kept trying to, Jim kept trying to explain, it's not how it works. People show up, we have to provide services whenever they show up. So.
Yeah.
That just changes the numbers and it can happen anytime and we have no control over that. Um, so I think there's still a discussion that some of us might want to go over there and have with them. Um, or a Q and A with them about, you know, here's how it works and here's how we try to deal with it. And, um, the one, I think the one other action I am, you know, in my opinion, uh, Mr. Mealy that came out of that was they wanted to have a, a subsequent discussion on the, the estimated cushion that you've built into the budget for special education. There was some discussion about that. Mr. Mealy told them he, it was based on past experience and he showed them the data. Ten percent was the number he's using going forward. You know, plus other, uh, monies that we would roll forward and all of that. But it sounded like they might want to have a further discussion about.
Right. And, and we may end up in the same place, but the point was that, you know, this was, as you guys have seen, an extraordinary year. The worst year out of the. you guys have seen, extraordinary year, the worst year out of the last eight years that we had seen was 10% or 10 and a half percent. And the average was below 10%. So I, I said it seems reasonable to me that building in a cushion of 10% makes sense and you'd be setting aside dollars probably unnecessarily if you went over that. And if you didn't do enough, then people could criticize you. But it is worth having that discussion of how much should that be, given what we saw last year.
That's fair. And I, I wonder when the FinCon goes to their organizational structures as well, might we identify who our liaison is if we're going to continue that program? And we might be able to use that as well in addition to attending official meetings.
Well, it was interesting because at the Finance Committee, one of the Finance Committee members said, you know, it might be a good thing if one of us showed up at a school committee meeting once in a while, really.
More than welcome. More than welcome. And thank you, Mr. Mealy, for, for helping understand, the shared understanding of our special ed needs this year and how this was atypical. So I appreciate that. We also give the town manager updates on our monthly budgets, if I recall?
Yes, we, that was part of our discussion. We meet with them weekly, but, you know, we would share those. Actually, he was providing the snow and ice numbers to us. I would send him the report and he would fill in those.
Yeah, and I think that's really been a best practice for you to help us understand the, the risks that we get on a monthly basis in the, in the budget updates. So I'd like to see that if we can continue. It's been very helpful for everyone. Great, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, then.
Old business.
Old business. Guess we've got a second reading and approval of revisions to the personnel book. So entertain a motion to approve the second reading.
This is to approve the personnel-
Excuse me, approve the, yes, the personnel book based on the presentation in the packet.
So I move that we approve the revisions to the personnel handbook as presented in the packet.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, can we have a discussion? Any other comments or concerns? If I recall, there was a request to check, was there, were there a couple of references that needed checking or am I recalling a different, different review?
Might be another review. I just comment, Deb Bartini, our Human Resources Director, has done a lot of work on this in conjunction with other districts that are updating as well in order to reflect the most current practices across, so it's not, it's not her writing a novel. It's her working in conjunction with other Human Resources Directors to update policy regard, with most current, with the most current laws, et cetera. So I know it's, it's, it looks overwhelming, but it's, it's a lot of collaborative work on part of a lot, a number of Human Resources Directors that help each other constantly to do this.
My only general comment is that in other personnel manuals and other places, the typical, one of the issues that always seems a little difficult to address is for various kinds of harassment situations, it's the reporting. How does a person who feels they've been aggrieved report that? And we have, you know, we have language in here and there are people and there's ways to do that. And that might be the, you know, that's always an area that probably always can use more eyes and more review, just to make sure that, you know, people would actually feel comfortable reporting an issue that, you know, they feel is important to them. And I think, you know, I think it's pretty good, but, you know, it wouldn't hurt to pick another, other people to take another look at those areas. You know, it's for the various harassment issues associated with personnel policy, so that's about it.
Okay.
And I don't, I, I, you know, we would approve and then this, you know, going forward in subsequent revisions, we would think about, you know, how that process works and make sure that, you know, we're, we're good about that.
Okay. Any other comments?
So we'll call a vote for approval of-
Can I?
Yeah, actually, sorry. Hutch, can you explain, I'm sorry, Dr. Hutchinson, can you explain, I think it's on page 10 in the packet, a little bit about this, after you leave public employment section here, the forever ban and the one-year cooling off period? I see it on, on page 10.
It's, it's language direct to the Ethics Commission, so it's coming right out of the, I can't say I'm an expert on this, but it, it's coming right out of the Ethics Commission, their guidelines for when you may do something, if you leave employment, might you do this and when might you do it? Forever ban, it's gonna be, I mean, never again work-
I just want to be sure that there's not an, an impact for teachers on that.
I would say absolutely not.
You may never work for anyone other than the North End of Republic Schools on a matter that you worked on as a North End of Republic School employee.
And then there's a paragraph on the next page.
The perfect shall bar former employees from selling to private interests their familiarity with the facts of particular matters that are of continuing concern to their former public employer.
That makes perfect sense. It says, if you do something for us, you can't profit from that when you leave it from, from us. We, we don't, you know, so if you develop a database or if you develop a curriculum program, you can't now sell it to someone else.
This is the educational equivalent of non-compete, is my interpretation.
Okay.
But I would, and I think Mr. Gross is right, it's more of like going to private enterprise. You know, you taught here, you had some connection here and then you go to a company that's selling curriculum, right? Not, not becoming a teacher at another district.
Okay. I just wanted to-
Yep.
I couldn't imagine that that was it, but it just, there was something with the wording that just made, okay, other than that, I'm fine. Sorry.
Seems a little strict, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, it refers to on a matter that you worked on and that's really-
Right, and I think that's probably what-
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
So we'll call for, for vote, all in favor of approving the handbook as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no extensions, four zero, thank you. Moving on to second, this is the, we've done 11B, moving on to 11C, the second reading and approval of revision policy DFG, indirect cost accounting for preschool and full-day kindergarten. Let's jump to that. So I take a, I take a motion to approve as presented.
I move that the committee approve, sorry, I lost my pager, policy B-
DFG.
DFG as presented in the packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. So this basically cleans up the full-day, half-day-
Correct.
-kindergarten discussions, okay.
Yep. Yeah, because we don't have tuition anymore.
Right.
So it doesn't apply.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
So all in favor of approving as presented, a policy DFG, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, none, so it's four zero, thank you very much.
Mr. Gross, I would respectfully suggest that we finish off the one item that's not the evaluation, this community programs discussion. So the last thing we have then will be the evaluation.
That's fine. That sounds good, so.
One quick thing.
Sorry?
At one point, capitalized preschool and that, and DFG in one place we don't, do we want to make that consistent?
Oh, in the, in the policy, probably. What do you think it should be? Caps or no caps?
Feel free to forward your comments to-
No, we're just-
It's a heading.
It's a heading, so it should be capitalized.
Yeah.
It's fully capitalized in the heading.
Yeah.
And it's-
In the, in the body, it's not.
The body, it's simply, the first letter is capitalized.
Yeah, okay.
No, the, in the one, two, three, the fourth line.
Fourth line, it's, it's not consistent.
Oh. Sorry. Sure, that's easy.
Great. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
The vote on it again?
No, yeah, yeah, we're good. We're good. Great, thank you. So under-
Community programs.
Under new business, we have a discussion on approval of community program requests to increase FY15 budget and there's also a request to suspend the rules so that we could, we could vote on this tonight. So Mr. Mealy, you want to give us a quick update?
Yep. We do this most years, not every year, but this year in particular, we've had, we've seen increased enrollment in our after-school programs, which is a good thing. So we wait till the end of the year, this time of year to, to request an increase. You have to increase, you, school committee has to vote to approve an increase in a revolving account in order to spend more out of that account than what we had originally budgeted. We've collected more than $100,000 in fees for these programs, but our expenses are $100,000 more than we had anticipated. So Rick Galanti will actually pick up more than we had thought he would for the year, but we need a vote of the school committee to increase the budget by $100,000 so that we can cover, pay the expenses that we owe.
Okay, so this is basically budget neutral, it's-
It's, yeah, and as a matter of fact, we're, we're more to the good than we anticipated.
Increases revenue.
Yep.
And can you describe why it needs to be approved tonight as opposed to at our, at our next meeting?
Because we're trying to close out the year.
Very good.
Yep.
Good answer.
We only have two more waters.
Got to count those last two dollars.
Exactly.
Great.
Ms. Savage would be very concerned if we didn't close it back.
Yes, that would be important. So what I'd like to do is entertain a motion to suspend the rules first.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor or any discussion of suspending the rules, any concerns?
Nope.
None, so all in favor of suspending the rules so that we can vote on this request to increase the community programs FY15 budget, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, zero, four zero, thank you. And I'll take a motion to approve the $100,000 increase to the FY15 community programs revolving account budget.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion?
So, just say again, so it's just, we've had $100,000 more of people using services and so this $100,000 is to cover the additional cost.
That's right. That's right, to-
So there's no additional spending, it's just-
No, no, no.
Coming in is going out.
Allows us to meet the need.
Okay.
Right.
And it, it just tells you how fabulous the community programs, programs are when there's such a dramatic increase in utilization, so, great. Any other discussion?
Nope.
We'll call for a vote, all in favor of approving the $100,000, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, one, two, three, four, thank you. Is there any public comment, moving on to our, oh, actually-
We have to do this evaluation.
I'm getting there. I'm getting there. It's your first meeting, you're allowed. A little rough on the edges there. So the next topic is 11D, which is our superintendent evaluation. This is a interesting, interesting process. Annually, we do evaluate our superintendent throughout the year, including mid-cycle review, but at the end of the, end of the school year, there is a summative evaluation pursuant to what we establish as goals and objectives. And this is the opportunity to provide that feedback, but also formalize that in, in the place of a written public document that describes that output. So I first want to thank Mr. McDevitt for coordinating the feedback into this document, which I know is no easy task.
It's all yours next year.
Yeah.
Over to you, buddy.
Looking forward, I can't say, can't say that much. And good, we have Mr. Mealy presenting on the display.
Yep.
So given that you are intimate with the content, do you want to walk us through?
Yeah, I'll, I should be able to do this in no less than 60, maybe 75 minutes or so, so we should be good, or as long as my battery on my laptop holds out. So the first thing that I'll say is, the four of us are here tonight, obviously we know David, Teresa wasn't here. David kind of joined the school committee into the beginning of the year and so he kind of, hadn't gone through the initial evaluation piece of that and so he didn't include comments in his, in the evaluation, but I know that he had spoken with you earlier, so. So what I tried to do here, and if, if there are mistakes or corrections, then I am more than happy to, to send those out to people. So if we look just at the first section, and again, I'm not going to go through every line by line here, but what I tried to do was make notes on where there were, people kind of ranked. So for example, if we look at professional, can't speak, professional practice goals, you had one ranking in the significant progress and that's from Mrs. Warren Zora, and then four, Brian, Stan, myself and Zora, who gave you kind of a met there as well. So my assumption from that, Zora, was that you were kind of like in-between?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So some things, you know, just kind of in that trajectory, kind of out there. So that's where, if you see kind of initials, I'm sure you can figure it out, you're, you're a doctor, so you, you got that.
And I, the thing I really liked of this, BSA, Boy Scouts of America, that was good.
BSA, oh, body surface area?
Yeah, body surface area, Boy Scouts of America.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. I liked that.
Good, thank you.
All right. So easy enough to kind of run through there. I think, you know, in general, the goals that were out there, you know, from professional and student learning and district improvement, all kind of were, from a majority perspective, that we met, that we obtained those, that, you know, kind of with your leadership, we were able to make significant progress with those. When we get into the assessments of performance on the standards, I got a little odd on some of this here. So, you know, everybody kind of, actually, I think I might have missed some of the indications here on this. I'm sorry?
Standard two and four.
No, one and, one and four, one and three, I don't think I had flagged this kind of needing, needs improvement because, again, Mrs. Warren kind of gave you a double ranking on there. But I went back through my notes and I couldn't figure out if, if on two and four, I was missing somebody or not. And it might have been me or not, and so then I kind of, I was trying to go back and through and I, there's so many versions that were open, I kind of got lost in there. But I knew that you had at least three, so I figured that was majority and that, that kind of covers.
Yeah, that was good enough, right?
But, you know, all of those, instructional leadership, management, operations, family, community engagement, professional culture, all of those proficient across the board for those. The evaluation comments that are in there as well, I just really took the, the comments that people had, I didn't mask them, I just kind of felt we needed to, to put them in there directly. I think Mr. Gross was probably-
Was it the most verbose?
The most verbose, it could have been the altitude that you were working on this.
Yeah, lack of oxygen, too much alcohol.
I think I got this midway through a plane flight to some far exotic land or something like that.
Cleveland, maybe.
So I think in terms of any of the, the individual comments, I'll let people kind of speak to that as we kind of run through that. And then for most of, most of everything, it was all kind of meeting, you know, that there had been significant progress with all of those kind of running through. And I'm not sure what questions members of the committee or Dr. Hutchinson might have.
Do you, Mr. Gross, do you think it'd be helpful for us to each individually go around and sort of summarize what's in here, just talk to it a little bit?
Yeah, that I think that's, that's reasonable.
That'd be good.
Any objections?
No, no.
Okay. So do you want to, do you want to launch?
Yes, since I said that, right, since I opened my mouth. The first thing, I, I just want to say right up front, I was, when you, you used, Mr. Gross, you used the term a couple of times in your write-up, transitional year, and I kept thinking about the transition in, I kept sort of forgetting about the transition out, so I wasn't thinking much about that. I was like, no, 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 we did the beginning part, we're always done with that, so I, that was a little confusing. For me, I guess the high point of this year was personnel. I think the most significant thing that happened this year, and I think it will be significant for some time to come, was the, some personnel actions that took place, and I'm thinking specifically of six individuals, two curriculum coordinators, tech director, the reading coaches that we've seen, and a new principal at Franklin School. I think all of those individuals have already shown some real, have started to influence real change in our, in our district, and I think that's going to only continue. So I think, to me, that was the real, kind of the real high point for me of the year. The other thing I would say.
Two assistant principals.
What's that?
The two assistants.
Two assistants, absolutely. So that's eight, is that eight?
Also fabulous.
Two, four, six, seven, eight, eight people. Absolutely, absolutely, thank you. God, what, how can I not think of that? Those, that to me is really significant, and to me, that's a lot of what real leadership is all about. It's like getting the right people to do the job. You don't have to do all the heavy lifting yourself, that's the way it's supposed to work, right? You know, you should sit in your office with the feet on the desk with all the smart people out there running around doing the work for you, and you go like, good job, keep it up, you guys, right? So I think that's been going really well. The other thing that has been an amazement to me, you would, you'd think I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, the amount of progress we've made in technology. We have a long way to go, but we've come so far so fast compared to where we've been. It's just absolutely amazing how, how much of a change we've made in that area. You know, so I think we're ready to really now like leap off and start to do some good things with technology. It's just, it's been an absolute amazement how, how far we've come in that area and how the, you know, everything seemed to just have gelled so quickly in all of that. Having said all of that, I still continue to struggle with activity versus outcome, right? I know every, all progress is, is, takes much activity, but having said that, we're not in the activity business, we're in the, we, the school committee, are in the outcome business. It's hard for us to really evaluate activity, right? I mean, we can take people's word for it, it can be anecdotal, and we can hear stuff, but we really don't know, we're not on the ground, we're never in the schools, we don't do that. So we're sort of dependent on things that look like outcomes, you know, as you, as Mr. Gross continues to tell us, key performance indicators, whatever you want to call them. And that's why, you know, I, I continue to sort of fall back to MCAS scores. I'm not a, you know, it's not the end-all and be-all, that's not the only thing in the world, but it is a quantitative thing I can hang my head on, and I can say that's a measure I can look at, and I can do something with that. But it can be a lot of different things. So going forward, you know, I think that's one area where we, as a school committee, need to work with our incoming superintendent to think about how to do outcome measures, right? You know, we've come a long ways here, too. I think our strategic district improvement plan is, you know, miles ahead of where it ever was, and it has, you know, much better format, much better content, and one thing that the superintendent, our current superintendent has done is provided focus to that effort. You know, it doesn't have a thousand action items, and it doesn't have a thousand goals, it has a few that are, we hope achievable in some, in some time period. So that would be kind of my overall summary. I guess the only other thing I might add is, I do think we've made some important gains in communication this year, too. I think our sort of district communication, I think, from the superintendent, but just in a variety of ways, has, has shown some nice progress this year, so that's kind of my take on it.
Thank you, Mr. Limpert. Anyone else care to go next? Ms. Warren?
I'd rather go last.
Want to go last, very good.
Sure. So I think, overall, I would say I echo similar to Mr. Limpert, I think some of the new positions that have been added in this year have been added, have had a, a good impact on the district. It was great to see the evidence today from the reading program, and I certainly, you know, look forward to getting more data on what it meant for all students in general, particularly with the coaching, which wasn't part of the data today, but I think, you know, all of those pieces certainly put together that, that big picture of, of where we're going as a district. I think that's incredibly valuable. But I would, I think the, the part that I, that I struggle with is, I know that teachers are doing a lot of curriculum work, and I know that the district heads for both STEM as well as humanities are working with teachers, and with Mr. Gilligan are at the professional development days and going through curriculum. I think the piece that doesn't always get translated back is, is what that means for a family and for their students, and for the kids in the different grade levels from, you know, from pre-K up to grade twelve, and I think that's the piece that I would like to see more of, is, is what is happening. I think because everyone is working so hard and at all these different activities to make that happen, having more opportunity for families and students to see that and make that be a more conscious part of the conversation, not just within the staff, but within the community, so that we can not only know and acknowledge it, but also participate in that as, as community members and as families. The one piece, too, that I always thought was really fantastic were the walkthroughs, and I know that's something that, that you all have worked really hard on doing, and I actually am okay with anecdotal data, but I still think that it can be, I know you are, too. But I, but I think there's a way to provide some summative feedback from that, to say, you know, we've done these number of visits over the course of the first half of the year, here's what we're seeing and how that connects back to the PD that we've been doing, and what we're doing going forward for the remainder of the year, with our goals focused on, you know, higher order thinking and, and mapping it out to the, what was the, the pyramid?
RTI.
No.
DOG.
Whatever.
Web's depth of knowledge.
Thank you. And I think all that is so valuable, so being able to say, you know, this is what we've seen now, because we've been doing all this work with our teachers and as a district, and so what we're seeing as we're going through the classrooms is this, this is what's actually, is, is what we're finding is working in the classroom, and here's what we see is still areas we can work on together. I think would be, again, just a great way to be able to move beyond just MCAS data and having something else that we can talk about, and again, acknowledging that great hard work that everyone is, is putting forth in ways other than just that one, you know, a couple tests a year. So I think, I think that's it, I think that's overall, that's the.
Great.
Summary for me.
So I'll let you go last. My feedback, I think, was in the area of four key areas. One is on the, the financial management of the district, I think with the superintendent's oversight and guidance, and some excellent work with Mr. Mealy and collaboration with other members of the, the town, including the town manager. We're actually at a point where we can honestly look in the mirror and say we're getting to performance-based budgeting, and I think that, I'm looking forward to making that even more robust and providing some of the short cycles to figure out, do we need to make any, any fine corrections on that moving forward? So I applaud you in, in helping us get to that point with your leadership and your direction. Unfortunately, I do have trouble with anecdotal data, and yet again, I'll, I'll comment on, I, I believe the, the focus on improving quality of teaching will eventually provide input and, and accelerate our student performance. If we meet all of our objectives year by year, but we don't see that performance improvement, then this, this, there's a connection that I still see as lacking, or at least I just haven't waited long enough, we'll find out, we'll find out. So I appreciate the commitment for the strategic district improvement and the school improvement plans, and a lot of, if not, if not all of those tasks were completed successfully, and I look forward to seeing our summative evaluations, to see if it actually moved the needle on performance this year. With regard to specific areas of challenge, I think we, we might have had more readout from some of our piloting activities. We, we had a great example of what I think is a typical, or what would be a good readout from a pilot, this is what we did, this is what our measures were, these were the results, therefore we're making the recommendation to accelerate, suspend, repeat, whatever. I think, you know, that more of that as we, as we finalize and improve our piloting capabilities would be very well appreciated. Other than that, I think for the most part, it was a fairly successful year. You know, we have some, some challenges in contract continuation and whatnot, but I think, you know, those, like you said, there, there probably isn't a year when we don't have at least one challenge, so. With that said, I appreciate your off, your, your service, and I hope that this, this provides some reflection opportunity.
So I'll try to be somewhat quick, but I feel like you kind of started as superintendent, and I was joining the school committee, and now you get to leave and I'm still here, so I'm not sure how that happened.
Yeah.
But I, I think, you know, aside from everything that I've kind of written out, or everyone has written and, and said, this was a year where there was a, a very big focus, I think, for the school committee on finding a new superintendent and, and a search, and that was probably a, a big distraction kind of in the, with us and with the community and kind of teachers and people being involved in that. And I would just like to say, you know, personally, publicly, I think Dr. Hutchinson, kind of knowing that that was kind of coming, and, and someone else was going to be following in his shoes and all that, continued to work hard, and it would have been very easy to kind of say like, I'm, I'm at the end, I've been doing this for, I don't know, forty years? Thirty something?
Forty.
Forty? I'm just going to kind of ride things out. Someone else is coming, and they're going to, you know, pilot the ship as we go forward. And I really think that you have continued to work with the collaboration, the, the leadership team that we have, the professional development, the curriculum, to not make this a stagnant year for us. And I don't know at what point in time we will necessarily realize that from kind of a data perspective, but I know in my heart that we have moved as a district, and we could have very easily taken a year and just kind of hung out and, and stayed at status quo. And so as difficult as it was, probably sometimes with the weather and the snow days and, and some, some other things that were kind of going on, I just want to thank you for being as diligent and seeing the job done and through as well as you have, and there's still thirteen days left.
Yeah.
But I, I do think that that, we, we need to recognize that, and I thank you again.
Thanks. I will be burning a few vacation days.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, there's one more thing I want to add, so that it really sort of, other people know this. I think another really critical contribution that you made this year was in our teacher contract negotiations. I think you have always been a person who is a strong advocate, advocate for collaboration. I think that was the first time we've ever tried using a collaborative approach for contract negotiation. And I, my opinion is, from just observing the process, it was highly successful. I think everybody walked away from that feeling good about that process. There wasn't an us-them, there was no, didn't seem to be, you know, there was, I'm sure differences of opinion, but there didn't seem to be any acrimony in the end, and seemed like we got a really good agreement out of it and made a lot of progress in areas that we have always said we wanted to make some progress in and never do, like cleaning up contract language and a lot of stuff. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want us to leave this table without giving you a lot of credit for being one of the strong proponents for interest-based bargaining, and I'm sure supporting the process all the way through, so that's something else that we certainly need to give you credit for. And I, the other thing, and I, I'm trying to, I'm sort of struggling, in this, in this review, in this evaluation, which budget would we include in this one for giving credit? Would be, it'd be the forward budget or the back budget? Is it the next year that we're evaluating now, or is it last year's budget that we're now implementing?
I think we're evaluating the results of last year's budgets and our, last year's budget and our ability to generate next year's budget.
Okay, so to that end, what I would say is, last year's, along with the personnel changes, the thing that made that possible was some of the most creative budgeting that I've seen since I've been on the school committee. Right? So we were able to do, make personnel changes, significant personnel changes at no, at no additional cost. And that's, it's held us back all the time, I mean, you know, some of us have been here for a while, and we've, you know, we've, there's been an express need for assistant principals at a couple of our elementary schools, which we've never gotten until now. It all happened, and that was a budgeting, kind of a budgeting coup in a lot of ways. That made all of this other stuff possible, so how could we object if it costs nothing? How could we object to doing things better if it didn't cost us anything?
Oh, I think your point of the fact that you collaborated with all the administrators to make that happen, I think.
Yeah.
Is certainly a real high point. So thank you.
So the whole collaboration is maybe the, should be our big takeaway from all of this. It's like, you know, sometimes I'm a little impatient about collaboration, it takes a little longer, but in the end, maybe it's always better, because everybody's bought in and they're ready to, you know, sign up and move forward, so that's a good thing. Great, just want to add those things.
Good points, good points, thank you. So I propose that, given that this has basically been presented in its draft form, if there is any feedback, corrections, or clarifications, I think we need to get them to Mr. McDevitt. What date do we want to declare this to be?
Well, I would propose that we, you know, as we often do, vote to approve this with the, with the caveat that if we found something later that we thought was wrong or egregious, we could change it, but we would approve it at this point, so, you know, we could let Dr. Hutchinson know that here's where we stand, and he could walk out the door with an approved performance evaluation.
All good with that?
It's not like we're going to be signing a new contract or giving, handing out raises here, so we're good.
Right, right. So that is backdrop, what we haven't heard from is you, do you have any comments or thoughts?
I'll make a few comments. There was a lot going through my head, and I think a lot of you were right on. I think you're all right on, actually. I, I reflect back on, I never intended on doing this type of job, I just love teaching. And it just, things just kind of happen, and I think, and when I reflect back on it, the more involved I got in really examining teaching and examining collaboration processes, and getting involved with outside organizations like Coalition of Essential Schools and the National School Reform Faculty, being a teacher just wasn't enough. And, and then when I became a principal, being a principal just wasn't enough, because although we, we felt we were doing really good things in the school, when we talk about it at a district level, a lot of people just didn't want to do certain things, and so that led me to just want to get to the district level, which I've been at for ten years. And I, I have this, this, you might think I have this fixation on gears.
Yes, what do you say?
Which I do, by the way.
I wrote that right there on my.
But it's about systems, and about how systems work together, and how the gears work together as a system to drive. And districts of this size are tough, because they're very lean organizations, we are a very lean organization, and we were so lean administratively that it's very difficult to get some things done and to make some impact in curriculum and teaching, et cetera. And as a team, and I think you, you saw two examples tonight with Mr. Gilligan connecting with Jackie on the reading, and Mr. Mealy connecting with FinCom, it's all part of the system and how it makes the system work better, and we had to juggle a lot of, a lot of, and by the way, it's really systems playing, because it took a number of years to get to where we were this year, and shifting things around, and I'd hate, and we had to do it fairly cost-neutral, and I had to build the trust of the team, and the team thinking as, as a district players rather than just building leaders. And I, I think when you, when you, you look at it, I hate to say that I wish there was just a little more money to do things that are right, rather than just be able to trade and exchange. You know, reading's an example, imagine what we could do, another half a million dollars on intervention, you know, and it's a shame we just can't get over that little threshold, because as a community, but I buy, absolutely buy into what is it we can sustain as a community. Yet, I also would say to the community, we're just not spending enough on schools, we're just not. There's other ways to go about things, but the bottom line is, you have to spend more on schools. Unfortunately, I was talking to a good friend of mine in another district that has North in it, but I won't say which one, and she just had to cut twenty-seven teachers, because they couldn't pass it over, right? So, you know, I say, geez, I thought we had it bad. But, you know, things are tight, I, I think as a team, we've worked really well to be able to capture that big picture, and as a strategic movement, I think the, the model for strategic planning is a very solid one now, the changes we've adapted during the year for planning, and the templates we've begun to use for the measurement, you'll see a lot more of next year, especially connected to the new initiatives. So that's exciting, and I, I, you know, I wish I could have been around another ten years to see it, you know, come to fruition, because you do, having been in the business for so, I hate to say business, you know, in the vocation so long, that you know if you do certain things, you're going to see results, you, you know it. Education is interesting, you just can't drop a pill in somebody's mouth and all of a sudden they get better. And it's so, they talk about differentiating, you got differentiated for everybody all day long, and it's a complicated, complicated profession, and we have a wonderful group of professionals in the administrative staff and the teaching staff that are doing, that make it just worthwhile coming every day and plugging to the end. I don't like things to end, so I just like to, all of a sudden, okay, it's over and just work out. So, and, but I feel that way because I just love what I do, and to a large extent, I don't want it to be over, but.
Yeah.
Another extent, I'm getting pretty old, so.
Yeah.
You do age, you do age, so, but thank you for your, I wish we, I think that, because my biggest weakness is always just, just do the work and don't, don't try to package it and don't try to, and that's the communication piece about, how does a community really understand what you're doing well? And that's always been my weakness, about not, you know, maybe packaging it, branding it better, so the community. it better so the community can really get behind it. I'd rather just do the work and not worry about that, but I did, it's a necessary element that, you know, as a team, I build going forward to look at how can we do that better and where, where people's strengths are in different aspects. Because a lot of, there's a lot of strengths on the administrative team and I think we've worked off of those pretty well and you have to in a lean organization. So it's been, it's been a really enjoyable time, so thanks for the evaluation. I look forward to maybe not having one for-
Yeah, for a while. Well, maybe you'll have one at home all the time.
I get one every day.
Just a question, so this is eight years, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Eight years. If you were going to pick out a handful of highlights, I mean, things that you really, that really sort of stood out to you as kind of really high watermarks in those, in those times, anything that sort of just comes to mind over that whole period?
I think I'd say to the administrative team, as I have, that the gelling as a team has been significant and the team thinking as a district team, not as, as individual schools, that's including the ECC. And that's not easy because a principal's job or director's job is advocate for the building. But everybody has needs and I think the more work we've done with that, people have realized we need to move forward. And I see, and when you look at the work of pre-K to 12 and what they're working on and the manner in which they're working on it, they, they really understand what collaboration looks like, what it needs, they need the structure, it needs the time, it needs the facilitation. And we've really, really made a lot of progress on instilling and incorporating that type of system. People talk about PLCs and people say they do PLCs and ask what they do and they're really not doing professional learning communities. It's just a term that's abused. And I like to play around with it, any course I teach with, too, so. But I think we've, we've, we're, we've gotten closer and closer to capturing the essence of what that is. And in the end, that's what really matters because that's what needs to improve teaching. And if you don't improve teaching, it's not saying teaching's bad, but if you don't make improvements in your profession, then you're not going to impact the product, which is student achievement. So I do, I do love qualitative research rather than quantitative. There's always a good element of quantitative you want, but qualitative is the meaningful story. And there's a lot of meaningful stories going on in every classroom every day. And how do we capture that as a system is what our job's about, so. And I get very emotional about it.
Well, we, we've always known that you, you have a love of curriculum, that's for sure. So we've known that from the very beginning and so, you know, a lot of great work has gone on in those areas. You've educated us all, educated me, I should say, a lot about all of that. So that's been a, a thing that I appreciate, so thank you.
Great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent evaluation as presented with the right to provide corrections to Mr. McDevitt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All very good, so any further discussion?
Second, you're second.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Any further discussion? So all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Four zero, no abstentions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Final agenda topic before we adjourn to executive session is public comment. Seeing we have no comment, oh, you're good, no public comment this evening?
Okay.
So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn public session. I'm sorry, oh, sorry, we have a, just a-
Shout out.
Shout outs and check ins.
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
So one is that this Saturday at NAMs is the Stephen Summer Kickoff Event with artist Rob Soret, I believe it is. And it's at 1:30 this Saturday, so that's exciting. We've got some very exciting reading initiatives through the public libraries happening this summer, so go and read, all students. And finally, thank you to all the teachers, staff, nurses, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, crossing guards, principals, parents, PTOs and everyone in the community who has helped, even CAM, thank you, but all who have helped to make this year successful and a good place to go to school and go to work to support the community of North Andover, so thank you.
Well stated. Ms. Lippert?
I'd like to just give a shout out to the town of North Andover for providing such a wonderful new school administration building. We had the grand opening last night. If you weren't able to attend, I'm sure it'll be on CAM or someplace, you'll be able to see it in person. But it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful new location for all of us, centrally, central to our town, near five of our schools, you know, a great place. And I'm sure we'll have more open houses, so come and visit when we have another open house. I'm sure we'll have some in the fall, so I wanted to express my gratitude to the town for having provided us with that wonderful new facility.
Here, here.
Just for our new superintendent.
No offense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'd have built yourselves if you would have stayed around a little longer.
This is something special.
Can, can I add to that?
Yes.
In that we are moving a week from Friday on the 26th and we will be operating out of there on the 29th. So anyone who has business at Central Office will get that communicated in other ways as well, but I'll take this opportunity-
Don't go to 1600, right?
Right. Monday, the 29th, if you have Central Office business, it'll be at the new building, 566 Main Street.
Fabulous.
Soon we'll put that on our website and-
Exactly, we'll do all of it, yeah.
Great, thank you, Ms. Mealy, good point.
Just a couple of very quick things. One, tomorrow night, I believe it is either six or 6:30, is the Elementary Drama Club, which is doing their annual Wizard of Oz production, which if you have not seen is, it's very true to the story with some, some fun pieces to it. The costumes are amazing, they are all handmade by Prestash winner Amy Mastermonico a couple of years ago with some modifications and it is just, it's a great, great show, it's free of charge. The open house last night was great, we had a lot of people who attended, we got to actually cut the ribbon, which was a little bit fun, some of the biggest scissors I think I've ever held, so that was pretty exciting.
What? You didn't run with it?
I didn't run with it, no. So again, just to echo Mr. Lippert's comments, I really want to thank the town for their support and their dedication to education in North Andover. And I think that that building will be a place that we'll be able to grow out of for many years to come as we continue to make advances there. And last but not least, you know, I, I didn't say this in there, but I would be remiss if I didn't. I just, again, want to thank Dr. Hutchinson for everything that he's done for the district. But in addition to, to the stuff that you've done in the past, I think you've done a great job in opening yourself up with availability to Dr. Price in trying to make a smoothest transition as possible. So thank you for partnering with her as she, she comes over. So thank you.
Very good. I echo the sentiments, so thank you. Are we good to take a motion to adjourn from public to enter executive session for, under Master and Law 38, Chapter 21A, for strategic negotiations, North Andover Teacher Association and-
Actually, non, non-
Non-union personnel.
Right.
Where an open session would, would compromise our position, I so declare, and not to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 And yes, we're adjourned. Thank you, good night.